Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the city of Canyon Lake, Lord, and just the many ways that you've blessed it. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, Lord. I continue just to pray for our city, Lord, and ask for your continued blessings. I pray that tonight, at the city council meeting, Lord, that there would be transparency, there would be open communication, ears ready to hear, Lord. And I pray that even in honest disagreement, Lord, that our council would be able to work together in harmony, Lord. I do pray for unity. I pray that needs of the community and its citizens, Lord, would be met accordingly and according to your will. And I do thank you, God, so much for the first responders in our city, firefighters and police officers and many who are members of Canyon Lake who are serving locally and overseas in our armed forces. And I ask that you would just have special watch over them, Lord. We do pray also, God, just for those affected by the tragedy in New York yesterday. And I ask that you would comfort those who are hurting and having questions, Lord. And just ask that you would bring a peace that would surpass any understanding that we might be seeking. We ask these things in your son's precious name. Amen.
Brittany, I know you're the director of the preschool, right? We had two positions, right?
And I oversee the early family ministry.
Wow.
Yeah. They keep me busy up there.
Alex, could you lead the...
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aaron Grantz.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Hagerty.
Here.
Mayor of Proton Warren.
Here.
Mayor Bonner.
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the city council agenda?
Am I making a motion?
All in favor? All right, I can give those. Okay. Okay, I think I mentioned last time that one of the fun things about being a mayor or a city council is going to the month, being student of the month. And so we have a very special lady, young lady, that's gonna come up and talk to us for a couple of minutes about her background and her mom. So I saw her work as student of the month. Could you read the proclamation, please?
This is the certificate of recognition for Caitlin Bouchon. Whereas students of the month are nominated by their teachers and nomination is usually, but not necessarily, based on grades, character, leadership, and activities. And whereas Caitlin has excelled in all of these areas by being varsity and junior varsity cheer captain, being the national champions in competitive cheer 2017, receiving the Rotary Youth Leadership Award, being involved in ASB Link Crew, serving orphans worldwide, and youth group elevation church. And whereas Caitlin's hobbies are cheer, being a Sunday School teacher, drawing, and spending time with family and friends. Whereas Caitlin plans to attend San Diego State University or the University of California San Diego for nursing or human biology. Whereas Caitlin hopes to become a nurse or a P.A. and travel to underprivileged countries, especially Africa, to the Breath of Heaven Orphanage, where she went on a mission at the age of 14, where she wishes to work in their home clinic. Now therefore, be it resolved, that Randall P. Bonner, Mayor of the city of Canyon Lake, on behalf of his fellow councilmembers, do hereby extend their congratulations to Caitlin Bouchon on her accomplishments and wish her the very best in her future endeavors.
One thing I want to ask about if you, on this one, on the speaker, you got your calls, because the people on the public don't hear you. Like I told, what passed down after mine, I mean. So I don't want to do that twice again. Okay, this is a remarkable young lady. And one thing she's done, and Stephanie just read the proclamation, but one I'd like to hear just a little bit about your mission at 14, and it was Africa, wasn't it? Could you maybe just spend a couple minutes just talking about what that was about?
Yeah. Thank you so much. So at the age of 14, I just led to go to Africa. My youth leaders talked about it at my youth group, and I just knew in my heart that I was supposed to go. And so I went home to my mom, and I was like, can I please go? And she said, no way, I'm not sending you to Africa. But the next Sunday, they spoke about it again, and my sister this time said she wanted to go. And she said, I'll be 18 by then, so I don't need permission. And I was like, that's not fair, because I brought it up first. So turned out my dad, he's a pilot, and it turns out that he actually was at a hotel right next to Breath of Heaven Orphanage, and he went and visited there, and he brought them Belgian waffles, because he was, went from Belgium to Zambia. And so we did a lot of fundraising, it was a lot of hardship, there were some difficulties, but me and my sister went to Africa in the summer of 2014. And I have to say, like, it changed my life forever, the way I look at things and what I want to be. It just truly was an amazing experience, so.
Thank you very much. You want to go up and say that before?
Oh, I'm such a crier lately. So this is, she actually has a twin brother, so she's my, she's the twin A. She came out first, and then, but I just want to say, I've always just known Caitlin had a special heart from the time she was little. She's just a loving young lady, and I'm just, I couldn't be more proud of her. She puts her heart and soul into everything she does. But I think the thing that I inspired her about is just her love for the Lord, and I think she's gonna serve him well, and I couldn't be more proud to be her mom.
Thank you very much. All right, I need to get a little help on this one, so I'm gonna ask Nancy Horton to come up. I'm gonna ask Jordan Aaron Grantz, and I'm gonna ask Mayor Creighton to come up and help on this.
This is the proclamation honoring Jean Bouchal for her recognition of service. Whereas Jean Bouchal, co-enforcement officer, officially retires November 2, 2017, after over seven years of outstanding and dedicated service to the city and residents of Canyon Lake. And whereas Jean Bouchal was a critical contributor that helped achieve the goals of many of the written policies and objectives that will guide future enforcement for years to come. And whereas Jean Bouchal has achieved and completed FEMA certifications affirming a dedication to serve in a time of crisis for the residents of Canyon Lake. And where Jean has completely committed to the community of Canyon Lake, reliable in every detail from beginning to end. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the city council of the city of Canyon Lake, California, does hereby honor Jean Bouchal for her achievements and dedicated service, and we express our appreciation for her years of leadership and enforcement to the city of Canyon Lake.
Well, the reason I needed some more help is because the three people around me and myself have been working with Jean off and on, well, technically Jordan continues for the last three terms, working with Jean since 2010. So one thing I remember more about anything is attention to detail and follow-up. And that's what I like with people on the staff, because then it causes to look up other things, as long as we know things that we ask to have happen. We do it through the city manager, but we appreciate Jean for what you've done all this year. So Nancy, first, you want to, by the way, Nancy, I think everyone knows Nancy, but she's on a first term and had a relit first second term, and she was a mayor in 2010. So why even tell this to her?
So that was the year that Jean was hired. And what can I say about Jean is that professionalism, number one, she was trained, she had worked in to make the life, she came to us with a wealth of experience. But it isn't easy knocking on somebody's door and saying to them, you have a violation for which you're going to have to pay a fine. That is never a good opening. Or to go to a house that's empty and examine the swimming pool and find out that it has to be drained. Whatever the issues are, they're always difficult. And it takes a special, very special person to get the cooperation of the owners and get the job done for the public safety of all of us. And Jean did that every single time. So I'm so grateful that we hired her, I'm so grateful for her service, and she's been such a delight to work with.
Okay, next I'd like to have Jordan do that. And Jordan is on his third term, and he's been a mayor twice, so he's got a lot of experience.
Well, thank you. I'm certainly happy to see that you're finally gonna get to do what you planned on doing, riding off into the sunset and spending a little time with your husband.
Yes.
That you haven't been able to for a while. You've done a fantastic job for us, which all the accolades will all probably be the same, because you haven't done anything that anybody can condemn you for, that I know. I seem to remember years ago that you were kind enough to allow your son to come and speak at one of our council meetings about the bath oil or something.
That sucks.
That sucks. So you had a dual purpose, I guess, at one time, and it was quite enlightening, and we certainly appreciate what you've done. And I know that we're in good hands, because Ruby seems to be doing the job, but probably not as well as you did. But we want to thank you for training here, and thank you for everything you did. Have a successful retirement.
Thank you.
And finally, I'd like Mayor Creighton to do an albatross. Mayor was a three-time, three-term councilmember and three-time mayor, so she's got the height of most involved, I think, in anybody that's been pet much. So anyway, thank you, Mayor. Oh, I think, by the way, I'd like to call her Queen Mayor.
That has nothing to do with politics, it has to do with acting in play as a queen. And I was dubbed, they certainly did typecast me as I was, but this is about her. And I went, Jean, it was a great day for Canyon Lake when Jean was hired. And she was so easy to work with, and so dedicated, and so good. And Nancy said a lot of things, and I'll be held to this, but go knock on a door. And she was such an asset, but I'll tell you one story, because this went on forever. We had this house that was, it was sort of occupied, I guess, but it was in a disaster. It was in code violation. It was in very, very poor condition. And, you know, and Jean tried, and tried to get a hold of, do you remember that? Couldn't get a hold of these people. She called, she posted signs on the door, front door, and this went on and on. But Jean did not give up. And finally, we got these people, and we got that house fixed up. It was a public nuisance, it was a nuisance, it was an eyesore right on the main street. So Jean did a wonderful job for that. And Jean, I just want to say to you that you can go away saying that I made a difference, because you did. And we're really proud and happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Brittany, beyond the proclamation, we have a plaque here for you from the city of Canyon Lake, acknowledging Jean also, in recognition and appreciation for seven years of dedicated service as a co-enforcement officer for the city of Canyon Lake, November 2017. Thank you very much. Do you want to say a few words?
I'm, wow, I expected a certificate, I did not expect you guys to come up, and that's what threw me. I'm so honored. And I loved working here. Every day was different, I never knew what the complaint was gonna be, or what I was really gonna find when I got out there. And so it's been a lot of fun working here the last seven years, and thank you.
Thank you.
It's so good to see you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim Brandl, do you want to talk about the chairman?
Mayor Bonner, council. First off, I'd like to file a protest.
What's that?
Third month, you put me behind the heavy hitters. Okay, come on.
But that's, you're the president. Well, that's not the point, Brittany.
Are we recording? I got a dead side.
We are recording, it's not live, it's because, do you want to find out what happened to our video recorder?
Saturday was our 25th annual parade of frights. Turned out well. Every report I got, I had to leave at 11:30, I had a date in Laughlin. And the head count is tough to figure out, because you've got kids that don't sign up, and they still trick or treat around to the businesses and what have you. But all indication, we were within 50 or 60 of last year. Would like to add more out, but the business actually said the L.S. not too bad after spending $200 on candy. The next thing that are coming up is our Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Then after that, we're actually dark until after the first of the year. In February, we're having our annual gala, and we need people to participate in the awards, get the nominations in. There will be a posting in the Friday flyer, and I believe it'll be later this month. In a week or two, we're gonna publish it, and probably publish it again in December, the form to fill out for the making applications. And a side note for Mr. Green, we have changed the format.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But that's all I have, and I hope to see as many as I can of you on, in February.
Well, you're gonna see it on November 25th?
Well, yes, I will be buzzing around on the 25th.
We'll be here.
Okay.
Okay, is there any public comments? One of them?
Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available at the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to the individual being heard by the city council. City council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you're commenting on an agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time the particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you're addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following: further matter back to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or get very limited factual response. Nancy?
Nancy Horton, EMDWD. I'm really here to talk about the Quell Valley Environmental Coalition and what will happen tomorrow morning. At 10:30, there is to be groundbreaking for the sewer system Phase 1, Area 9 in Quell Valley. Little history, in 2009, the city, new leadership of Lori Moss, our general manager and manager, held meetings with the city of Menifee, the city of Canyon Lake, EMDWD, and EMWD plus flood control at the county, to talk about the moratorium on all building in Quell Valley and the issue of pollution of Canyon Lake from failing septic systems. In 2010, QPEC was incorporated with a seat on the board for Menifee, Canyon Lake, EMDWD, EMWD, and the county, and the rest were citizens of Quell Valley. In 2012, EMWD got a grant of 1.93 million for the sewer system. They had many other grants for planning and engineering, et cetera. But one of the things that we felt very strongly about the QPEC was that every year we would hold an annual meeting and explain to the citizens, those who were still waiting for the chance to build on their property, which they couldn't do because of the moratorium, at least to explain to them why the sewer system wasn't being built. Mostly, it was because of the downturn in the economy and the fact that even when grants were given, the funds were frozen and the monies were not forthcoming. So tomorrow morning, there is going to be a ceremony, congratulations to Eastern for getting at least $10 million together for this project. It's a beginning. It's 200 hookups, 150 are homes, 50 are vacant lots. The area is Vista Way and Buddy Way and the lateral streets. Why is this really important for us? Because we should see a lessening of the bacterial pollution from those septic systems. Because part of the deal is that they're going to be abandoned. The failing septic systems are going to be filled with gravel, so they can never be used again. And gradually, we should see less bacterial pollution. We still have bacterial pollution from Centecentra River and Salt Creek, but this is the beginning, this is a great thing. So eight years ago, we started this project, we had eight annual meetings, we were committed to the people of Quell Valley to help them understand the process. We saw an evolution. In the beginning, they were 100% against it, hated the whole idea, because they were worried about the cost to them personally. Now they're almost 100% for it, because even their hookups, their individual connections, are going to be paid for by funds, grant funds found by Eastern. So it's a great day, it's a day that I look forward to for eight years, and many, many people in our community worked very hard for this to happen. Thank you.
Nancy, do you know when the project's gonna start?
Well, it's already started. The roads have been chalked and lined, so that they know where they're gonna put the pipes and things. Breaking ground, they said September, so any day now. And the thought is that they're going to finish around the end of 2018, having had the experience of all of these deadlines that passed that never happened, probably 2019. But the other thing that I need to mention is, because of the delays in finances, because we didn't get this project going as fast as we wanted to, it was fortuitous that Audy Murphy Ranch, which went through a period where they weren't building either, suddenly built, and now there's a 54-inch sewer line that goes down Getz. And now, when the sewer system is built, that pipe is going to take the effluent away. Had we had all the money in the world and built it five years ago, we would have had no place to put the effluent. So kind of happened in a good way overall, if you're really, really patient.
Nancy?
Yes.
This is just area or section nine, right?
It's Phase 1 of Area 9, it's not all of Area 9.
So that's what I was gonna ask, you said there's 200 hookups?
200 homes individually.
200, possibly. How many are there? What's about, you had a total?
I think there's 1,300 residences in Quell Valley, and the regional board is not willing to lift the moratorium until all of Area 9 and all of Area 4 are sewed. Area 4 is, if you drive up Getz, you'll see the circle K on the right if you turn left, that is the area called the grid, and that's Area 4. So even doing this project, it's not going to relieve us of that regulation that nobody can build, nobody can fix their sewer system, nobody can add a bathroom or a garage or anything, nobody can build in a vacant lot until the moratorium is lifted. So it doesn't, it doesn't help the people as much as we would like. I personally have appeared before the regional board and begged for them to lift the moratorium for the areas that are being sewed, but they said no. But they're revisiting it next year, so we'll go again, bring some Quell Valley residents and see if we can prevail upon them again.
Well, it's a good start, to step in the right direction then, right?
It's a wonderful start. It's a wonderful start.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Richard Settens?
Mayor, council staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, about three months ago, I asked you to take a look at the Regional Homeless Alliance, and I know city manager Aaron has. I asked you again to consider to look at it, to continue to look at it, and I asked you to join it. And I wasn't sure whether this really fit now, or fit with the letter to Bob Sasser. He sent me a copy of his report as well. He and I are friends and associates. I am involved in collaborating ministries, private individuals, churches, cities throughout the Temecula Valley, to try to do what I call Christian community development. And so I get involved in a lot of these things. And if you allow me to give you a capsule of my background, maybe it will validate my comments. I'm an engineer by degree, and after spending over 25 years in chemical engineering, I believe that God called me to ministry, so I went into inner-city ministry in the worst part of Indianapolis. So actually, if you'll allow me, scripture says that Jesus will build His church and the gates of hell will not prevail against it. I've never been to the other side, but I've been very close to the gates now. And so homelessness is only a part of that. The reason I ask you again is I'm concerned about what's going to happen in Canyon Lake if we don't join the efforts of the other cities. I'm involved just as a casual member of the Regional Homeless Alliance, so there are five cities all around us that are working together to remediate, maybe mediate, the homeless situation. They've been working together for a year and a half. They say that they invited Canyon Lake to join them at the start, which is now a year and a half ago. And if we don't get involved, we are going to be the dumping rack, and to some extent we already are. And if you remember Bob Sasser's report at the very end, he makes that point. So I ask you once again to please consider joining the Regional Homeless Alliance and be a part of this effort to try to deal with the homeless, so that we don't become the pen that receives them. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, I got the letter from Robert Sasser, and all the councilmembers got it. Okay, could we get a letter from, from Richard?
Not that I'm aware of. I haven't seen anything about the city joining the Homeless Alliance. I went to their, yeah, no. I went to their last meeting, looks like they do good work, they actually have a meeting tomorrow that I'm going to attend. That's, you know.
So Richard, could you prepare a letter to the city council, similar to Robert's, and just outline what, in one page of a letter, of what the thing is all about? Because this is the first time I've been aware of it, and maybe the other councilmembers have, but I haven't heard before.
Only from the last time.
I can say I'm aware of it, because we have talked about this in another committee that I'm involved with, of the emergency planners. And actually, we had the Temecula team come up and talk about their efforts to address the homeless that they have in their community in adjacent Marietta, too, and trying to learn from some of the more difficult homeless issues that are occurring in Orange County, specifically in Anaheim and in the areas along the Santa Ana River. And so I think it's worth our effort to look at it, because when we were in Santa Rosa this first week with the Sonoma complex fires, there's a large homeless population that has migrated in there. And we've got a couple photos of where they are under the overpasses and those things. So we're not gonna be immune. I just think that we've been kind of in between because of our spaces that we currently have, they're kind of hidden. But I think we really need to be on board and address it.
Okay, well, that's my request, if you could send the letter.
I will. It won't be official, because I'm not any, I don't have any official capacity with the Regional Homeless Alliance. And I'm sure that city manager Aaron can give you as much information as I can, but I will write over.
Okay, thank you.
Brittany, could I suggest that you forward a copy of that to the POA office?
Sure.
Because they've been handling homeless, they're in the Gully by the golf course, several places. And if you all got that email with the pictures, I've seen, and have friends who've had chase lounges stolen and patio tables and things, and so I think it'd be good to get them involved.
I agree with you on, and when I get it, or we get it, I'll get it, have the city manager, and have him forward it to the POA. Okay, thank you. All right, consent calendar, is there any, you want to read the consent statement, please?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered being routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion, but the concurrence of the city council, a councilmember may request that of a city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
And one comment before you approve the consent calendar. One of the checks on the warrant is for a part of our Christmas tree lighting for about The council gave us an initial 1,500, total budget of 2,500. The person does our lights gave us an estimate with some other things there. That estimate would put us over probably approximately 500 over that budget. So I'm just kind of peaching from the council, would they like us to scale back so we stay within budget or would they be willing to give us the additional 500? And we would bring that back in mid-year for the adjustment.
Mike and I talked a little bit about this when it first came up, that he was, that the estimate just to bring the lights up this year is exceeding what we had authorized. It's not a recurring, it won't, it's not like we have to increase the budget for the rest of the time.
Right.
This year is an extra cost. So I'm going to ask the council to please allow that to happen so that we don't, so that we're not constantly fighting this. So I want to just scale it back.
And I concur, I concur with you.
So can I have a motion to approve the consent with one, for the?
For this budget adjustment?
Sure, with the budget adjustment.
I make an motion to approve the consent with the additional budget appropriation increase for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony.
Second?
You want to roll call on that?
Yeah, we're okay.
Council member Aaron Crass?
Yes.
Council member Green?
Yes.
Council member Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. And the minutes will show that this was on 7.2. Okay.
Okay, schedule of future events, usually if you look on the website or City Canyon Lake website and/or the Friday flyer, most of these events are published well ahead of time. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to call in the city hall. It's 244-2955 and we'll be more than willing and able to answer any questions. Thank you. All right, let's get to business items then. First is going to be a discussion by Jeremy Goldman, the California, Southern California citizen regarding electricity char, I'm sorry, electricity outrages, outrageous.
Well, outrageous.
It's outrageous too.
I haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah, yeah, well, first of all, I'm back curving Canyon Lake, so thank you. I know I've worked with many of you the last few years, my colleague Eileen was over here the previous year. So we just kind of shift the cities around, what made more sense where we live, where our offices are. So, so yeah, I'm back curving Canyon Lake, so it's great to work with you all, so thank you. Picked a great time to come back. So, but I wanted to touch on some of the outages that have been going on inside of Canyon Lake for the past few months. So I just want to assure you, one, we're identi-